Thank you, everyone, for attending today. The issue that we're discussing is infant mortality in the city of Springfield. And Helen, what caught my eye was the numbers of blacks that are affected by this issue on infant mortality in the city of Springfield, black women. And apparently, that is still the case. Kathleen, do you have numbers on that?
Well, I don't, so I can give a little context. And I don't know, Commissioner, if there's anything you have specific. I had gathered some data because I was sharing before we could hear and we officially started that Janice, as part of the Maternal Child Health Commission, had asked me about data from the state on infant mortality. Well, really, it's on a number of indicators for perinatal health and maternal health. And so I was able to obtain some data. It's limited, so I have some overall data, but I didn't know if the city had some data.
No, we do not have. The data we get is from the Commonwealth, and so it would be consistent with the data that you have, Kathleen.
Okay, so I can share that. So the data that we have is both from 2020 and 2021. That's the most recent available data that the state is able to provide us. And so, and the data I have for the city of Springfield in terms of infant mortality is not broken down by race and ethnicity. The numbers were too small. So in 2021, there were, at least based on the data, again, that the state has provided us, there were nine children, or infants, who died from infant mortality during. So that's from zero to one year is considered infant mortality. And then there's a breakdown within that timeframe. And so if you look at Hampton County as a whole, then the numbers are larger and you can do a breakdown by race and ethnicity. And so for infant mortality, based on the 2020 data, it is higher among black infants than white and Latina. So whereas, so just for comparison, for the state as a whole. So again, we're talking smaller numbers, so they put it into a rate per 1,000. So in 2020, the rate was 3.8 per 1,000.
That's overall.
That's for the state. For Hampton County, it was five deaths per 1,000. And when you break it down by race and ethnicity, then it was four per 1,000 among white infants, the deaths. Latina, it was five per 1,000, and black, it was 12 per 1,000. And so when you look at, so this is just to share, and I'm not sure, Commissioner and Counselor Govan, if you had heard this part, because again, we were talking before it officially started. But some of my dissertation research was on maternal child health and birth outcomes. And so I was pulling together just some background information, which you're probably already aware of. But the leading cause of death is, in general, in the U.S. and similar in the Commonwealth, is birth defects, so congenital anomalies. And then the second leading cause of death is preterm birth and low birth weight. And so that is both in the U.S. and in the state as well. And those are where, are people familiar with preterm birth?
What was you said before, low birth rate? What did you say?
Preterm birth and low birth weight are the second leading cause of infant mortality? Yes, so that's before 37 full weeks gestation. And that's where there's been more intervention, right? Because that's where, depending on during the pregnancy period, and there's been a lot of work in the city with the Maternal Child Health Commission. And I was part of Project Baby before, where there are efforts in both looking at, one, the healthcare system. And I know, again, people may have been involved since then, so please share. I'm sharing, this was a while ago that I was involved, but I know there were focus groups done and there were discussions around institutional racism and interpersonal racism in the healthcare system for mothers who are black and then who are pregnant. And then in addition, it's how to best reach women in the community. And so I know a lot of efforts were done and there were some successful doula programs. And so where it was outreach into the community as well. And there's ongoing, my understanding is that a recent grant from Health New England is actually, because the work has been going well here, or at least there's an established program there, it involves having the group in Springfield, who's working with mothers in the community, do some training of groups in Berkshire, because the program's going pretty well. And then I also, there was this article that was passed around here. This is Dr. Lindy Sabico, and you may be familiar with her. I know her and have worked with her. And she's been doing some research in breastfeeding in the black community in Springfield. She was doing focus groups, understanding barriers, wonderful person. I think she's the chair of the Nutrition Department now. Last I saw her, she was. And so there's some people who are doing some work. Again, I have not been participating in the Maternal Child Health Commission meetings. My understanding, too, is that for that work. And Commissioner, I believe there's, it's a process of creating a strategic plan moving forward for that group?
Correct.
Yeah, so in terms of, when you look at the second leading cause of infant mortality, I was able to look at the low birth weight and preterm birth by race and ethnicity. And so when you look at low birth weight, so we're looking at Springfield. And so it is higher than Massachusetts as a whole. And so it's 11.7% of births versus 7.5. And you do see inequities. And again, a lot of this is driven by, you know, structural, like structural and institutional challenges that make it hard for women to get the care they need, to be able to be healthy and things, social determinants of health as part of that. So we see, let's see, it's higher amongst black than Latina, Asian, and white women. So it's 14.9% of births are low birth weight, which is 28% higher than white women, 11.6. And amongst Latina, it's 10.3%, and Asian Pacific Islander, 11.8%. When you look at preterm births, again, it's higher than Springfield and the state as a whole. And also, it's higher among, again, black women, but then Latina. So 15.2% of births are preterm births, Latina, it's 11.1%. But white is, amongst the white women who are giving birth as well, who are from Springfield, it's 14.7%, so it's pretty high. It was also high in the Asian Pacific Islander group, but that was a very small number of individuals. So when it's really, really small, you just have to be much more careful with how you interpret it.
Is age a factor in this?
So age could be a factor, but this does not take into account age, this information. This is just among all births. They look and report, the hospitals report to the state which are preterm births and which are low birth weights, so that to get a percentage wrong.
Now, the statistics that I've seen, Worcester has a high number, too, of infant mortality among the black community. And also, surprisingly, Hampton County didn't lead the area. Hampshire County actually led the area in infant mortality overall, which I was surprised by that number. But, you know, the numbers are the numbers.
Can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
So about the Hampton County was five per 1,000 and Hampshire, six per 1,000. But when you break it down, you really see those inequities by race and ethnicity and other factors. So that's where it's really important to break it down.
Okay.
So like, for example, though Hampshire County was six per 1,000, when you look amongst black residents, it's 12 per 1,000.
Do you have Worcester's numbers, too? Do you have Worcester in there?
I don't.
Okay, but Worcester was high. So here you have the two largest cities in, two out of three, Boston, the largest, but Worcester and Springfield being the largest cities in New England. And these numbers are, you know, they're up there, especially, like I said, within the black community, which to me is, you know, they're very concerning, very concerning. One of the things that was said in Dr. Sabico's article, she said Springfield, this is quoting her now, "Springfield suffers from an unacceptable infant mortality rate, given that Massachusetts is one of the richest states in the country. There's a pocket of individuals suffering a persistent health inequity that is egregious and indefensible. African-American infants in Springfield are dying at rates that are greater than twice that of their white counterparts." And then she goes on to say about the breastfeeding may be something that would help this situation. So have we implemented breastfeeding in the black community? As she indicated, that might be helpful?
Yes, there is a, as a matter of fact, Chanel, who sits in the mayor's office, is the individual who heads the Black Breastfeeding Initiative. And so she is very much involved with the daycare centers and others to promote breastfeeding in the black community. So yes, we do have an initiative that we support that looks at black breastfeeding in the city of Springfield. But let me move this a little bit to Counselor Govan, because I know the grant that Dr. Zegda was talking about was really a grant from an Indian orchard, that bringing that coalition of individuals together around infant mortality and child maternal health. So if you don't mind, I know Counselor Santinello, you're chairing, but Dr. Zegda did bring up a couple of areas that I think we have some experience with, particularly Counselor Govan.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you so much, and thank you, Commissioner. So when Kathleen mentioned the Health New England grant, that is correct. In 2022, the Indian Orchard Citizens Council actually received a grant from Health New England for about $20,000. And at that time, our lost Dora Robinson actually was in charge of that grant. And she helped the Indian Orchard Citizens Council come together and bring a program together for mothers of color in that neighborhood, because as the statistics show, that area is very low resourced. There's not a lot of providers out there, and that is a large part of the problem. So Dora Robinson was able to garner over $25,000 in other financial support and in-kind support, including some from the Health and Human Services Office. I think the Public Health Institute helped us out. And we were able to come together and do some focus groups, some hearing, listening sessions from the community. We heard from the residents, we heard the problems that they were facing in reaching providers, in accessing the resources that they needed. And we know nationwide, right, that this health disparity among women of color exists. If you guys don't know, if you know Serena Williams, she, you know who Serena Williams is. When she was pregnant and she was giving birth, she experienced these health disparities. She experienced the racism in the health system that she was facing. And she was able to publicly talk about it. So it doesn't matter, I don't think, how much money you have. It doesn't matter, you know, where you live. What matters is that these health disparities exist. The social determinants of health are affecting our community, and these are the outcomes. So, you know, I'm hoping with this meeting and with the ongoing work that the Maternal Child Health Commission is doing, the infant mortality rate is going to continue to decrease, hopefully, and help us to have healthier, you know, babies and have women access the healthcare that they need at an earlier rate, right? Because a lot of times, and I don't know if you all know this, Mr. Chair, that, you know, when women of color present in front of a doctor, a lot of times, their concerns are ignored, their concerns are just minimized, and they're not heard and they're not listened to. And that's the reason that we have these health disparities. And that's the reason that we have to continue. So right now, actually, in Indian Orchard, the Health New England has awarded us a $20,000 planning grant, because they want to continue the work that was started by Dora Robinson. And we're doing a planning process right now, actually, with her daughter Kimberly, which I'm so grateful for, because in Indian Orchard, there's a lot of work to be done. I am the president of the Indian Orchard Citizens Council. I can't do all the work, so I'm grateful for the work that's being done by the commission, the Health and Human Services Commission, by Kimberly Robinson, who is Kimberly Williams, my bad, which is FDR Associates and Dora Robinson's daughter, to continue that legacy, right? Because we need the help. In 2022, the culmination of the grant that we received from Health New England was a community baby shower in Indian Orchard. Now, we know that the Maternal Child Health Commission puts on a baby shower at the Commerce High School. And we know, and Counselor Walsh knows, that Indian Orchard is way on the other side of town, up near Ludlow, Wilbraham. So it's a lot of times I've forgotten about town. And some of the residents that live there, they don't think that they're part of Springfield. So it's hard for them to say, oh, let me go down to Commerce and, you know, participate in the baby shower, because it's a long drive for them, it's a long bus ride for them, you know? So when they go to the baby shower, if they, you know, get a carriage or they get some, some things that are given to them, getting it back up to Indian Orchard on the bus could be a little bit difficult. So that's a barrier right there. So we did put on a baby shower in 2022, and it was hugely successful. And the reason for why Health New England is, again, giving us a $20,000 grant in hopes of planning for a future three-year grant, a multi-year grant with a lot more money and a lot more partners. So we need, I'm really glad that you brought this topic to light, Mr. Chair, and that we're going to continue the work that we've been doing. The Public Health Institute has actually been doing a lot of great work regarding this. Their research is close second to none, and I am really grateful for that. So that's my take on this, and I'm hoping that we'll continue this conversation. Thank you.
Kathleen?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Govan. And just to echo what Counselor Govan was saying, the state released a report, I believe it was in November, highlighting the severe maternal morbidity that is, has been on the rise.
I read that.
Yeah, and it's only at the state level, but it's exactly paralleling what Zaida was saying in that you see those same inequities as we see playing out nationally, like, for example, Serena Williams, and you're seeing it here as well.
Counselor Govan, you being in the behavioral health field, nothing, in my opinion, can be more traumatic than losing an infant, a child, to a mother. What do we have available for counseling when someone loses a child? Do we have those available counselors to take care of those people, to counsel them?
I don't know that we have enough available counselors for any diagnosis. There is actually a really great group, oh, God, I forgot. I believe it's called Empty Arms. Am I correct? Does anyone know that group? So they're a group, and they're people who have lost children, like you said, lost babies. And they counsel the people, mothers who are in the hospital, and maybe they have a stillborn death or the baby died shortly after of SIDS or whatever the case may be, they do respond to that. I don't know that they are fully equipped to respond to every situation or every case, because of course, we need more resources, we need, you know, they probably need more resources. But they are an organization that is doing that kind of work.
Commissioner, do we have that? And do we have any federal money that might be available to pay for these counselors?
The, what happens is, when a loss occurs anywhere, the healthcare institution is, should be responsible for assisting with a social worker or a case managers. The child maternal health system itself does have, through the daycare centers, the ability to do case management and counseling. So specifically, those cases should be followed up on. There is, we have reports that I can share with you. We do have a child maternal health strategic plan. It is about five years old. We're in the process, the Child Maternal Health Commission is under the Springfield Department of Health and Human Services. So we are in the process of seeking the opportunity to update that plan. It is a 30-page plan. When I look at it, nothing much has changed. The challenges still remain the same, but we want to make sure we're updating that. One of the areas is adequacy of prenatal care. So assuring that a woman gets into prenatal care prior, by the third month of pregnancy, absolutely. And making sure we have a healthcare providers who are culturally competent. And I don't just mean who understands the nuances of the culture of the woman that they are taking care of. And so we continue to, because some healthcare providers can be culturally destructive without really understanding that that's exactly what they're doing. So there's a lot of work being done, I believe, in this area. A lot of good individuals are doing work. The Child Maternal Health Commission, the Black Breastfeeding Initiative, that is working also with the Latin Breastfeeding Initiative. So there, again, I just think that the community baby shower, we're in the process of, that will be, I believe, on May 11th. We hold it the same day as the Pancake Breakfast, so that we're hopeful that mothers are already in Springfield and they just walk up to Commerce or get one of the transports up to Commerce. So I'm happy to send you all the documents that we have, counselor, so that you can take a look at them and just see the work that we've done and that's being done.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
I did have a question. Yeah, either to Helen or our very learned colleague here. Is it that there's a lack of obstetricians? Is that an issue, too? Or is it just that, as you said, the culture, not culturally competent?
If I may, Commissioner, I think it's a combination of both. Counselor Walsh, you know, we don't have enough OB-GYN. In Indian Orchard, we don't have any OB-GYNs. I don't think we have any pediatricians out there either. So in different neighborhoods, and then they have to be culturally competent, as Commissioner Harris said. So, you know, a lot of times, that's, that's a barrier. And again, when our, when people, women of color present to a doctor, maybe to a primary care doctor, when they maybe report a complaint or report an issue, a lot of times, they're not listened to. And that's where the cultural competence has to come in. There's a great series of videos, and I have, I'm blessed, I guess, to have a copy of it called Unnatural Causes. And it delineates, one of those, it's called When the Bow Breaks. And that talks specifically about the maternal child health issue in this country. And if, you know, I'm possibly going to be showing it out in Indian Orchard in anticipation of the Health New England grant that we'll be getting once we finish the planning process. And I'll invite you all to that, so that you guys could see, you know, historically, what has happened in this country regarding maternal child health, especially in the black and brown community. And then I think, you know, if you guys could join the cause, because that's what this is, right? This is a cause that we've been fighting. I remember sitting on the Maternal Child Health Commission, maybe 10 years ago, having this conversation and continuing to have the conversation. I don't know, and I believe maybe Dr. Zegda could let us know if the numbers have improved a little bit. But that's what we have to continue fighting for, you know, that systemic oppression that continues to happen on a regular basis. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just, do you have, you want to ask a question? Morning, everybody. Stephen Howard from the McNamara. Thanks, I'm really glad you're having this. My niece practices in New York, but she's an OB-GYN. And I'm surprised to learn that there aren't sufficient, or if any, OB-GYNs in certain districts. As a member of the council, and speaking on behalf of myself, not the app, but council, we suppose we're having our next meeting two Tuesdays from now. And I think this is a very important issue. How could neighborhood councils get together as a group to make the information that's being shared here distributed, so that those people who may not have OB-GYNs in their districts would know how to get in contact with the city councils and find out, okay, I mean, the neighborhood councils, all right, how do I get this kind of attention? Especially when it comes to the loss of a young one. Thank you.
We could actually do that as a committee and make that information available to the neighborhood councils and be more than happy to attend those neighborhood council meetings. Thank you.
Chair, Helen, why do you think Springfield has a higher rate than Boston? I mean, that kind of surprises me.
Well, the city of Springfield has been having a high infant mortality rate since 1996. This goes back decades, where we've seen a disproportionate rate, particularly amongst the women of color. The black community definitely has higher rates. And so this has been historical. I believe the infant mortality rate has improved somewhat, because we had one that was likened to Third World countries at one time here in our city. So your question around the why. So the why adequacy of prenatal care, the low birth rate, there is some concern around mothers that may, whose behavior may inconsistent with being pregnant. So we want to take that into consideration as well. I'm talking about substance use disorders, I'm talking about potentially alcohol, I'm talking about those things that women use to cope with their emotions. And that happens, that happens during pregnancy as well. So why our numbers are higher, counselor? They have always been higher since I've known them. And our interventions, we've done a good job of trying to intervene. However, and I think we've moved the needle, to be quite honest with you, because I remember an infant mortality rate that was 12.0 per 100,000. So really, really, really very high. So it's come down a bit, but we still have work to do. And the why, even though poverty can be a why, adequacy of prenatal care can be a why, substance use disorder can be a why. If you look at the city of Springfield, you overlay every health status indices we have, we tend to be higher in almost every area than any other city in the Commonwealth, for the most part.
So we should get more aid?
Well, one would, well, I believe very strongly that there is a geographical funding disparity. And I say that all the time, I say it to the individuals at the state level, that it appears to me that the eastern part of the state is always well-funded or gets more money. And they want, they talk to me about, well, you know, the population base, it's still inconsistent. It's a disparity that I agree, that we should do a better job. And I always do, when I'm on the call with the state, remind them of the geographical disparity that we have in the western part of the state.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Constant pain.
Any other, oh, yeah, Kathleen?
So I just, I would like to just raise, too, I believe there are efforts taking place, like, so the Commissioner spoke of a number of factors that are at play. And just want to reiterate, it's so important to be able to, that there are cultural humility and cultural competency in the healthcare system. And so when you look at Springfield as a whole, it's majority of people of color, like compared to Boston, et cetera. And so just given even some of the focus groups that have done, been, occurred over time, it's so critical, it folks like to feel trust. And so I believe there are efforts within the Bay State system to look at maternal and child health as well right now. And there's these fantastic efforts that are happening in the community that the Commissioner and Counselor Govan have spoken to as well. But I can't, I just want to reiterate how important it is to, like, not only to have the OB-GYNs, but to have trust, to be able to engage over time. And given racism and other factors that are barriers, I think it's really important.
Any other, any other comments or questions? I just think as a follow-up, and I'll look forward to that material. Um, I I just think as a follow-up, and and I'll look forward to that material you're going to send over, Commissioner. Uh, and also, um, I I like the idea of going out into the neighborhood councils and starting that dialogue. Um, and I think as a committee, we can do that, and with the power of Zoom now, we can get more and more people involved. Where they don't have to necessarily be at the meeting, but they can be at the meeting uh via Zoom. So I think that would be terrific to start, and uh Kathleen. Tremendous resource. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna talk to you more. Fantastic.
Another question.
Yeah.
So Helen, I know how effective churches, church groups are.
Yeah.
Are like the council churches involved in getting out information or healthcare. Information, are they involved?
Well, they are when we specifically ask them, counselor. So, you know, if if we go to the churches and really bring this issue up, and I don't think we have. The faith community is involved um on the Child Maternal Health Commission, but, you know, uh going to the pastor's council, going to the council of churches. I think um that leadership would welcome uh a dialogue, so that's an excellent recommendation, so thank you for that.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner, when you mentioned um. Lack of funding for the western part of the state as opposed to the eastern part of the state, they get more. Money than we do by far. Who would we contact? Would that be the Department of Public Health, or would that also be the governor's office?
Well, I think you can do both. EOHHS, the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, because remember, it's not just the public health funding that we're concerned about. We're concerned about overall funding. Some of it comes through, um, you know, economic development or the HUD streams for housing. So we want to make sure that we're we're putting out a broad net around funding and not just um looking at health status.
Yeah.
Kathleen?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Dr. Zegda.
Okay, so I'll just add, at one point, our organization did um an equity assessment, looking at funding, going to the western part of state. Versus the eastern part of the state. Um, I mean, I think most people are aware that this inequity exists and had shared with. Um, I think the delegation, I can look, uh check in on that from the folks on our team who um do the policy work.
Mm-hmm.
Also, Govan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and uh I guess my comment regarding funding is, as I said in the meeting um a couple of weeks ago. At the city council meeting, um that Springfield specifically services a lot of people. That don't necessarily live in Springfield, right? Specifically homelessness. Um, people come to Springfield to be homeless. Um, because they don't have a homeless shelter in Long Meadow, they don't have a homeless shelter in Wilbraham or Ludlow. Um, so they come to Springfield to be homeless, so they they take up our resources, and I'm. I'm going to continue saying this until it happens. I'm going, we have to try to figure out a way where we could get those communities to help us out somehow. Since we are providing their residents services, um because it's not fair for us to continue to, you know, the commission. The Health Human Services Commission does a great job with the homeless population, but they're very um unre- lowly resourced. You know, so they need more resources, and us giving um our resources to people from out of town. Um, is what we have to do as, you know, Christian people, but we'd, we should get some sort of um, you know, compensation for doing that. And I think the same thing goes for, you know, um healthcare providers. I know our healthcare providers don't just treat Springfield people, you know, so. Um, the eastern part of the state and the western part of the state, we know that's always been a disparity, and I would love for us to find a way to make it more equitable. Um, and also, we need to figure out how we can, you know, make sure that Springfield gets uh credit for doing what it does. Because we do so much for so many people, not just our residents. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
And Counselor Govan, do you track our addresses tracked so that we can build on that data?
Uh, at some point, I'm sure it is. Um, a lot of times what happens is, like, for example, um at uh halfway houses, right? We have, right now in Springfield, the Behavioral Health Network opened up, um Cole's Place some years ago. And what I noticed, they opened up Cole's Place on Liberty Street in Springfield, and you know, in that neighborhood. It's mostly black and brown people who live there, and they opened it there because they wanted to service that population. And what I discovered a few year, a few years after it was opened, is that the most of the people that go there are white men. Because it's a men's program, and those men don't all come from Springfield. So most of the beds, I think there might be thirty beds, on any given day, twenty-five of those beds are filled by white men. Who, most of them do not come, live in Springfield, um so that, things like that, and that's how I know. I don't know if um in the homeless shelters, they ask people where they come from. I don't know that part of it.
Um, just a follow-up on that, uh uh Commissioner Carlton recommended uh that this committee. Tour the homeless uh, the homeless uh locations in the city of Springfield, and uh. We're going to do that, and uh that's very important that we do that. And uh and 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 I agree, a lot of people use our resources from outside the area. And that depletes our ability to help our own people in the city of Springfield. Uh, and the other issue that we're going to be taking up is we're going to be taking up at at a a meeting next month on uh senior suicide. So this is a very active committee, and I and I, does anyone else have any other questions?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead. No, go ahead. No, uh, uh, were you discussing opioids? Because I left a room.
Uh, no, 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 well, it was touched upon uh for 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 um. Yes, but not real, okay, just touch, touch on.
So, um, I unfortunately don't have the list of data that I had had pulling from quickly this morning. But to speak, just to circle back around to where we stand right now with infant mortality, to what the Commissioner was saying about improvement. Just, again, I could double-check this, but um as like, it it has, the gap, I think, has improved. And so I'll double-check this, but the data that I had had, it had, like Springfield was four point four per one thousand as a whole. And then the state was three point eight, so there was a year difference, but it really is the inequities between the the people of color. And and that you see at the state level as well, where you see these gaps, but to speak to what the Commissioner was saying. I I just wanted to share that, and I can full, like, look at the data, um. And just, again, that these inequities we're seeing, uh we're seeing them at the state level too, when you look at. So I think there's a lot of work to be done in general. We know in our society, the. The racism, systemic racism that people are experiencing, the social determinants of health and the challenges. So want to speak to that as well as a whole.
I'm very informative, reading.
I'd like to thank everyone for being here, and we're going to follow up with the different neighborhood councils. Do you have another, you want to say something else?
Yes, uh, the reason I, why I really came back, and thanks, uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. The reason why I really came was to uh touch on what's going on with opioids and the money that's. That uh is in the, I think it's one point four, one point one million of the one point five that's been sent so far. Of the seven point five million that's uh scheduled to arrive until, to be utilized until twenty thirty-eight. And uh since the mayor had uh these three vehicles that's equipped and police officers. Have the knock-on and other stuff that they could use in emergencies. I just wanted to find out what the status was, uh, will the mayor be reimbursed for the four twelve, four hundred and twelve thousand dollars? That he has spent on these vehicles and other things, and what are the plans for the next one point four million that's actually in the account right now? Because I've witnessed people on this, you know, like falling out in parks and sidewalks and stuff, and it kind of sticks in your head. And with this kind of money sitting there, I'd like to know exactly what's going on with it, what are the plans? Once the other uh five point seven million comes to Springfield. What are the, what are the strategies that have, that have been laid out so that these uh communities could be uh held? Because one of the main things, one of the main after effects of of these deaths is the stigma. That families in the community had, you know, and end up bearing, especially if it's uh children going to, going to school. You know, how they're treated, you know, like, oh, you you're brother junkie, or you're, you know, you know. That kind of thing, and that's something that needs to be addressed. And the final thing I want to say is we need to really sensitize the community as a whole, not just reach out to those who are directly impacted. So that we could show some more compassion and tolerance when uh when these deaths uh happen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're you're welcome. Thank you. It, oh, okay, so I I don't, I think we've concluded the meeting. It's been a very productive meeting.